Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Special Meeting. It's Friday, April 10th, 2020. It's after three o'clock. We're here with John Brook and several people in the meeting. John, could you call the roll for the commissioners, please?
Sure. Commissioner Regan.
Present.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Thank you. We also, again, we have special guests here in the meeting. What I'd like to do now is get disaster updates. Jamie, could you start us off with an update for your office, please?
Yes. Jamie Bain, Administrator Delaware County Health Department. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Numbers continue to tick up. We'll have a press release going out here as soon as this meeting's over. I have it drafted. I just need to hit send. We went from 51 cases to 65 from yesterday. Responses have continued to roll in to the violation letters that we've mailed out to local businesses. We received complaints on. For the most part, they are all well within the exemptions provided by the governor. Issues that we're seeing that this highlights, though, is... So the governor's order exempts categories of business, but not necessarily the activities occurring within the business. So businesses that are exempted are still continuing on with non-essential activity under their umbrella. But technically, they all fall under those statewide exemptions.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have as well.
Yes, I'd like to ask, please. Jamie, so you're seeing, when you're in stores, these non-essential items like gardening, paint? That's where the congregations are, the traffic is?
Well, no, not necessarily. For clarity, what I was referencing are the violation letters that we send out on any complaint we receive. So that could range from an employee at a business that thinks that they shouldn't get work, or that could be from a member of the public complaining that they see groups of people. When it comes to those essential items versus non-essential items, our office has refrained from trying to dictate that. I think an argument could be made, for the most part, on a lot of those items, to be honest.
True. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. I want to add real quick, if members of the public have questions or comments about the content of this meeting, you may email those to commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. Okay, thanks for that update, Jamie. Dr. Wilkins, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to see less people going into the big box stores with their kids. And people are saying that there are going to be two-parent families, and they'll still take four kids in there. I really wish the stores would count the number of people going in and going out.
I agree.
Okay. Anything else? Jason, Roger, Director EMA, could you give us an update, please?
Sure. At this time, we are working with the local government entities on the COVID-19 response. The Indiana Public Assistance Program has been opened up at the state level. The staff will be available for answering questions and concerns. If anyone who is filing for public assistance, that is for entities, government entities, some nonprofits, and that is outlined on the DHS website. Also, if you have questions about your application or to turn in your application, that email to send questions to the Indiana Public Assistance Program is pa@dhs.in.gov. The deadline has been moved from today, close of business, to the 30th. So we are continuing to answer questions here at the EOC for agencies who are filling out their PA request forms and getting online. I spoke with Manuela Johnson, who is the Public Assistance Coordinator this morning, and they have three staff that are doing input for the entire state. So she just asked for patience with those entities, departments, volunteer fire departments, as well as nonprofits that are eligible, just patience in getting them set up. The other thing that is ongoing for question and answer is from the Indiana State Department of Health. They do have a call center for the general public and for any medical providers, and that number is 1-877-826-0011. The EOC is continually working with suppliers and trying to resource for public safety, and we are anticipating putting out some guidance for public safety. It feels probably like we're inundating them with emails, but the information is rapidly evolving and changing on a regular basis. So we're just trying to keep with that here in the EOC. That's all I have for today.
I'd like to ask Jason. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you getting some requests about the homeless not having any work to go? I know that Baldwin at the emergency mission is trying to work on a site where he can house those people.
We actually are part of a task group. There is a large portion of the community that is involved with that. There will be information forthcoming with that. There was great steps forward with regards to that today. I know our office, Jamie's office, the city, other county offices, as well as a lot of nonprofits are coming together. We've had a couple of phone conferences on that and lots of emails. So there is forward movement on that, and there will be a press release once we have some definitive resources in place for this particular issue. But it is being addressed.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good job, Jason, and to the Health Department. I know you guys are very busy, and we rely on you a lot to take care of us, and we greatly appreciate you guys.
I just have one other thing. I mean, it's Easter weekend, and a lot of families get together with big Easter dinners or Easter egg hunts and have all the grandkids over. And this is not a time to do this. You shouldn't be inviting people over that are not the ones already living in your house and going out and shopping and having Easter egg hunts and having the neighborhood over. This is not a time to do this. You need to still be staying home.
I think everybody agrees with you. It's...
Yeah. Yeah, we can't stress it enough about the family up in New York that before this all happened, they'd had a family dinner about a week before the governor shut the state of New York down. And four of those family members, I think out of eight or 10, have passed away. So we cannot stress it enough.
Hey, Shannon. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
I think the governor gave, I think it was yesterday, the governor gave some pretty in-depth details on people that were... Some of the churches were talking about doing where you stay in your car and have it in the parking lot. But I think they gave a message yesterday about not getting together with families afterward for lunch and keeping your distance.
Even wanted if you were having a service at the parking lot of your church, even recommended his cars being nine feet apart. Windows out, you're not talking to people in the other cars. You're not getting out, giving them a high five or anything.
Correct.
Yes.
Nine feet.
Okay, very well. Let's move forward. Everybody got a chance to look at the Disaster Emergency Declaration 2020-06. This would be a continuance of the order that Delaware County already has in place. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to this order? John does have...
I just shared the screen showing the declaration in place, or the declaration as proposed.
I'll make motion to adopt the resolution to continue for another seven days.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. John, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's an approval to extend another seven days. Along with the disaster, there's a lot of worries for everyone, the commissioners and the general public. Something we're worried about is our local business recovery and retention of those businesses. I've asked our Economic Development Team Director Brad Bookout to speak a little bit about some of the things he's doing for the businesses, and Ted Baker's here as well. So Brad, I'd like for you to speak a little bit now about what's available for the businesses and what you guys have been doing so far.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So I want to thank the... I'm Brad Bookout with the Economic Development of Delaware County. I want to thank the commissioners and the EMA providers and all staff. I've been on the sidelines, kind of watching what you're doing. I really appreciate everything that's happening. The commissioners have given Delaware County Economic Development broad discretion and leeway to assist and provide assistance to local businesses and nonprofits. To date, we've connected with over 60 local businesses since the pandemic has started, from individual sole proprietors to companies with 300-plus employees. The commissioners and I have assisted and advised them in different ways. On behalf of Delaware County, there are a lot of resources available to businesses to assist them basically at no direct immediate cost. My office, along with the Innovation Connector, the Small Business Development Administration locally, the Chamber of Commerce, the State of Indiana, all the local banks have all committed to help small businesses at this time. All are sending weekly emails and information and updates as the situation evolves. I'd like to offer my services to assist those local businesses that we've not touched bases with in some capacity or whatever capacity they need to address the situation and to assist. We have broad knowledge, expertise, willingness to engage on different fronts, both from the state level and the federal level as well. I was on a call with Senator Braun earlier this week, and he's taking very seriously the assistance that the federal government has provided to businesses within the state of Indiana. So we know a lot of the ins and outs of those programs at this time. I also want to give props to a lot of our local businesses who we've engaged with. All of them recognize the severity of the situation, not only for their specific industries, but also for our community as a whole, seeing themselves as part of the community. They've been very gracious with all kinds of, the offer of all kinds of assistance. And we, as a county, and me, as the Economic Development Director, are very appreciative of that, from helping to source face masks, offering to employees in whatever capacity is needed, to offering the services of their business. We'd be at a loss without them. I just want to give some specific props to Mercs Corporation. I know a lot of us have read the Star Press about their efforts and the work that they're doing to make face shields. I know Commissioner King has been directly engaged with them on a couple of different levels. A Team Tool and Mold has offered their fleet of trucks to the county to dispatch anywhere at any time at a moment's notice to go pick up supplies if the county needs it. So we sincerely appreciate that and all the other offers of support from local businesses. Without that business community, we really wouldn't be a community at all. Some other specific highlights that I think businesses need to be aware of is regarding taxes for businesses. The IRS has now backed up the traditional due date from April 15th to July 15th for taxes. There's no late filing penalty. There's no late payment fees. There's no interest due if you do back up your taxes. You can even request an additional backup date to pay your taxes to October 15th. I'd recommend seeing your tax provider to do that. Regarding disaster assistance, any business or any sole proprietor, independent contractor, can go to sba.gov, click on Disaster Assistance. It's right on the home screen. Apply for Assistance is a big red box right in the middle of the screen. There's $350 billion available now to help small businesses to keep their workers employed. These are low-interest loans at 1% interest, and they are forgiven if the borrower maintains their payroll for a certain period of time. They're 100% backed federal loans. Doesn't matter the size of the company. Most all professions are eligible as long as you're experiencing a financial impact. I encourage everyone to apply. So important note on that is not-for-profit organizations, 501(c)(3)'s, independent contractors, sole proprietors. You can all start applying for that today, April 10th. So it's a five-step process. It's pretty simple. But with that being said, I want to turn it over to Ted Baker, because I'm working alongside him. He's been helping a lot of companies to take advantage of this. So Ted, do you want to jump in and say a few words?
Thank you, Brad, and thank you to the commissioners and everyone who is on the front lines of this. It's been beautiful seeing our community coming together as much as it has, and even our nation. So I'm glad of that. This all started, I just asked ourselves at the Innovation Connector, what can we do? One of the things that we do is we provide resources to help businesses start and grow. And sometimes we have to look at it as we help them survive. And so we've made our services available to any business, for-profit or not-for-profit. How can we help? This is for businesses, and I know I'm speaking for everybody, but especially for a small business owner. This is a scary, scary time. Some of them don't know if they're going to make it past next week. Some of them don't know what the future holds. And a lot of these small businesses I've been working with who have everything they have to their name invested in their company. So it's a scary time for them. So I've made services available to mostly just go through coaching, helping them basically not jump off the ledge, getting to a point where we can talk to them. Because when you're in a crisis, you really don't know what to do sometimes. So we've helped them navigate through what resources they have, what will they need, how can they get them? Since last Friday, we've been nonstop busy working with the Paycheck Protection Plan of the SBA, what Brad was talking about. And I've been referring everyone, just like Brad said, to the SBA website. Of all of the clutter out there and all of the words, the descriptions that people have given concerning all of these programs, I still believe the SBA website is the best. It is actually really, really good, and it is very readable and doable. For any government agency to put something like that together in a week is simply amazing. They've done a great job. Plus, they keep all the updates and new... So far, in the last 10 days, I've worked with 70 individual businesses, either for a larger company, all the way down to sole proprietors. I've worked with a lot of not-for-profits. Matter of fact, the Alt Brothers Foundation and the Community Foundation are all referring their clients to me in order to help, so that they can get help the way they want. All of this, no charge. We're helping everybody that we can. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a doctor either, but I'm not a CPA. However, we can help them navigate through some of these trying times, and we will be glad to refer them to an attorney or CPA if needed. So we're open to help people. Been doing everything, either virtually or... Everything we've done has not been face-to-face contact. So send them my way, send them Brad's way. Maggie Sanova with the SBDC, the same thing. She's more than happy to help. I'm just glad that we live in a community where people can get help for things like this.
Absolutely.
And as afraid as people are of getting this virus, the economic destruction that this situation has caused is going to be, is really going to be, will last a long, long, long time for some of them. My suggestion, make sure you take advantage of every SBA program that's available. And I know Congress is working on trying to get more money even, because that $350 billion probably is spoken for already. So I know local banks, some of them aren't even accepting any more applications because they're overwhelmed. But it will all work out, and so let us help you navigate that. Thank you for all your work, and keep up the good faith, stay safe.
Commissioner, could I just read off my email address and also Ted's if anybody wanted to reach out to us?
Please, yes.
Yes. You can reach me direct at bbookout@ecirpd.org. You can reach Ted at tbaker@bsu.edu. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you both for the job you're doing. And you're going to get a lot busier with weeks to come, I'm sure. But we appreciate you guys. We will, the commissioners will forward any business that we get, we'll forward it to you guys and have you guys try to help. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, moving on. We have the revised holiday schedule. Jimmy, can you talk about that for a minute? What changes you made to that, please?
So I think at this time, the only change was the primary election date. We, I believe, in second. So I think the way things stand now, we're back to work on the original date, which was, I want to say, May 5th. But we will now be off June 2nd for that primary election.
Okay, thank you. Jenny made a change to the schedule. You can see it on the screen, the primary election date, Tuesday, June 2nd. What's the pleasure of the commissioners on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the revised holiday schedule in a second. John, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Jenny, for helping with that.
Absolutely.
Next, we have the Wheeling Avenue Safety Improvements. John, do you have some information on that?
Yes, I'm trying to call that up. Yeah. Here we go. This is the Own Agreement for Safety for Services at the improvement at Wheeling Avenue and Moore Road in Carrington Boulevard. The governor's indicated that all infrastructure operations are continuing. End dot's not continuing or extending anything. So this is something that's necessary, that needs to be approved for inspection services, so this project can get up and going as soon as feasible.
John, what was that total that we're voting on today?
Not over 43,000.
Not to exceed 43,000, correct.
Okay. I move that we adopt.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the Wheeling Avenue Safety Improvement Agreement. In a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Thank you. Next, we will go to the Endot Amendment for Bridge 161 on County Road 170 South over White River.
All right, I've got it up on the screen now. This is an amendment to extend the time with Endot for Bridge 161. This is a Smithfield Bridge. And this is something that Endot needs to coincide with their fiscal year. And it expires in June. They requested that it be adopted now to keep that project moving forward, which they're looking at a bid letting in either late summer or early fall.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Endot Agreement for Bridge 161 in a second. John, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the Mutual Aid Agreement with the City of Muncie for ambulance service. John?
I would recommend that the commissioners table this. It was sent to the mayor and the mayor's attorneys early in the week after I drafted it. I got an email about an hour before the meeting that they've had insufficient time, wished to review it, and that they need more time to review it and/or make changes to it. So I would ask that the commissioners table it.
Table.
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second. Roll call, John, please.
Sure. Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Okay, that's all the business. Has anyone got anything else?
I'd like to let the public know that property taxes, it's up to the state and not the commissioners to extend that. I know there have been people out there wanting to know why the commissioners have not extended when they get to pay the property tax, but that's not an issue that the commissioners do. That is under the state. The state, they're the ones that handle the property tax. And also, I would say that all the commissioners would agree with me, but I'd like to give our condolences to the IMPD officer, Rihanna Lee, that lost her life yesterday in the line of duty. Like I've always said, some people run from it. We run to it. You know, beautiful young lady, leaves a son, her mother, her father, both are in law enforcement. You know, just everybody out there, send a prayer to that family. That's all I've got.
Mark, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Mark Schlescher with Endpoint Creative, who's running the meeting. Mark, could you explain why the meeting, we wasn't able to do a live meeting? Could you explain that, please? Because I know people's going to wonder about it.
Yeah, right. It popped up yesterday. There's been an issue with Zoom streaming to non-personal Facebook pages. So the county, the city pages are group-type pages. They're not like your individual profiles. So it's not just here, it's everywhere. They're working on it. So I tried to find workarounds for it tonight, and I couldn't. So we were unable to stream to the county's Facebook page. What I'll do, as soon as this meeting's over, I'll upload an unedited copy from when the meeting started till it end to the county's Facebook page, so it will be there here this evening.
Very well. Thank you, Mark. Comments? I just want to say something real quick. You know, we've... This whole disaster we're in has been tough for all of us. We've been commenting, comments made on social media, normally by people who's running for office, that are kind of upsetting to me because you guys that have been with us know what we've been through. And let's just, don't let those comments get to you. Let's just keep moving forward. Keep our eyes on our mission and try to get all this back together. It's going to be tough with the economy and our employees. And there's a lot of worry for all of us. And let's just, let's keep focused on the mission, not on those negative comments towards us, and just keep moving forward.
Shannon, I agree. And I'd like to give a shout out to our local businesses, coming from a local family business. Grab a bite to eat on your way home from a local restaurant or local store. But we're all in this together, and we just want to help everybody that we can. Thank you.
Absolutely. This isn't a... This isn't a situation to be politically grandstanding on. This is a serious situation. It doesn't matter what politics you are. We're all in this together. And we, again, just need to work together and keep moving forward.
I absolutely agree with you, Shannon.
Anyone have anything else?
I want to let you know that there were a few questions posed. I've answered all of those and submitted copies of the various declarations to everybody, so.
Very well. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion recess.
We have a motion to recess, I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to recess, call the rule, John?
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Thank you all, happy Easter, and enjoy yourself.
Bye, everyone.